Um, the next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda as it's presented.
So moved.
Second. There's been a motion by Rick, seconded by Bruce. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Right, the next item is the consent agenda. If there's no questions, I take a motion for approval.
I do have a question. On, let's see, page eight, um, there is a payment of two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars for city roof repair. Uh, for hail, uh, two questions, is that multiple buildings? And then second is, um, their insurance claim, uh, submitted for that.
I will let Matt answer this.
Yeah, that was the hail damage we, uh, had about two years ago and finally got it fixed. Um, we paid upfront and then the league reimburses us a hundred percent. So it was probably about seven roofs throughout the parks, um, baseball field, kind of scattered throughout, uh, town. So yeah, that's one hundred percent reimbursed back to us after we make a payment.
Wonderful. Thank you for that.
Appreciate it.
Couple of questions. Matt, on the parks herbicide, are we pre-purchasing or that herbicide payment twelve thousand dollars for this year's purchase?
So that would be for twenty twenty-five.
So we pre-purchase?
We always pay it usually ahead of time. Uh, they usually give us a good discount for a late fall rate, just so they can get their warehouse a little less, uh, emptier. Um, so we've done it this way every year.
We buying about the same quantity then?
Yep.
Financial statement on page twelve, Josh, I know that we haven't apportioned the interest payments, uh, yet on this statement. But I was just wondering if you have any new information on the, um, like the miscellaneous income in the government building is substantially over. I'm just curious.
Miscellaneous income. What page are you on?
Uh, page twelve.
All right, just a second. I'm not looking at the PDF copy, so I'll have to jump over to it.
And it could be that we're same issue. Are we apportioning it to different departments or something, or?
And you're on miscellaneous revenue?
Yes. Through October at four hundred forty-two thousand dollars and for the whole year we budgeted two hundred.
Yep, I will look to see exactly why that is, um, because I'm blanking right, right at this exact moment as to why that miscellaneous revenue is so much higher.
And then government building is pretty much the same issue, four hundred and eight, and we budgeted one hundred seventy-four.
For the expenses?
Yes.
That, oh, so government buildings, um, that one, if I remember right, at the moment, basically when these were released, we, uh, they were apportioning much of the, um, police facility work at this point into government buildings. Um, actually, since this point, I've already talked to them about pulling that back out, which I believe is why government buildings is so much higher. And will have its own line item, assuming we go forward with the police facility, but I will double check on that as well.
Okay, and then a general idea, how you think the year end is gonna, are we gonna end up with, uh, excess of any degree or any magnitude?
Uh, that's, um, I can't speak to, I haven't done that exact math on where that, that stuff is at yet, but, um, to me, things seem to be falling into place pretty well.
Okay, that's the only questions, questions I have. Anybody else? Otherwise, I'd take a motion to approve. The consent agenda, Rick made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Maggie seconded it. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Okay, now this is the portion where the public is invited to be heard on matters, not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes and does anybody want, wish to speak to the council? So what you're gonna do is state your name and address and your business.
Okay. Hi, my name is Collette Lucignan and I live at five one seven Red Poll Avenue Southeast. I believe that the city of New Prague should consider allowing chickens as backyard pets. For over nine thousand years, these animals have been domesticated and providing nutrients, food, nutritious food for us. Pet chicken eggs have been proven to be higher in omega-three acids and vitamin E than factory-farmed eggs. This and the following reasons support chickens as backyard pets. In twenty-ten, a town in Belgium offered three chickens to two thousand households as an experiment to cut down household waste. In addition to chicken feed, owners fed their chickens some of their organic waste. Officials reported that organic waste was cut in half, reducing the amount of garbage transported into landfills. Along the same lines of reducing organic waste, backyard chickens eliminate egg cartons in our landfills. One chicken can lay around two hundred fifty eggs a year. Each American eats an average of two hundred sixty-three eggs a year, which is twenty-two dozen eggs. That means twenty-two egg cartons don't need to be produced and then thrown away each year per person. Backyard chickens also reduce carbon emissions associated with commercial egg farms, including truck, trucking eggs from farms to distributors and then distributors to stores. Chickens eat plant-d destroying insects like grasshoppers, grubs, and beetles, reducing the need for chemical pesticides. If these facts don't convince you to consider backyard chickens in New Prague, then this last, last fact may. Some people believe that commercial egg farms raise chickens inhumanely. The chickens live in crowded, dark buildings and constantly smell and breathe in fumes and gases from their own waste, including ammonia and hydrogen sulfide. Chickens cannot walk around or even spread their wings, which they naturally want to do. Many chickens are de-beaked or have their beaks trimmed so they don't peck each other under these stressful conditions. Of course, there has to be some regulations for keeping chickens. Like to have, they have to have the proper space in their coop and outside to roam, depending on how many chickens you have. I would like the city of New Prague to reconsider allowing chickens as backyard pets. Thank you for letting me speak here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak to the council? Going once, come on up, Tom. State your name and address, please.
Tom Fadden, two zero three Lexington Avenue North, New Prague. Reason I'm here tonight, I want to talk to the council regarding your, uh, administrative staff. I've had an opportunity to interact with each one of these gentlemen at one point or another. Something stands out from this last summer that I want to touch base on, but before I do, I just want to say that, um, every time I've had an interaction with one of them, it's always been very positive. And I think it's important for me to mention that now, because I believe in January you probably do performance evaluations. And, uh, I mean, I'm sure they'd love it if I'd advocate for a significant pay raise, but that's up to you guys. But I just want you to know that I appreciate everything they've done, Ken. He's been like in a encyclopedia every time I have a question when it comes to planning, zoning, or anything like that. I know I can call upon him and I'm gonna have the answer. He's always been very helpful. I've known Bruce for a long time. The most recent thing I've talked to Bruce about was a question regarding, um, solar energy. He was very matter-of-fact. He didn't tell me I should or shouldn't do it. He just gave me the facts, let me make the decision on my own. But again, um, great person to have in the position he's in. Tim, I don't know, I mean. I've known Tim for many years. Um, I think he's a great guy in general. I think as a police chief, he's doing a phenomenal job. Um, and I just, you know, I mean, I don't have anything negative to say about Tim. Like I say, I've known him for years, way back. The main reason I came tonight was Matt Rinda. So this summer, our street was one of them that was tore up. And I had a surgical procedure that, um, I needed to have access to our driveway to get to and from some medical appointments, physical therapy, whatnot. I contacted, contacted Matt and one of the first things he said was, Jesus is new to me. I've never had to deal with something like this. And between Matt and the contractor, they made it possible for my wife and I to have access, to get in and out of our driveway for the period that I needed to have access to the driveway. And it was, it was a seamless process. And I know I talked to Josh, I made a phone call to him, but I also wanted to bring it to your attention, how nice it was to work with Matt and the way things went. Um, and I appreciate everything Matt did to help us out with that. And as far as Steve Rinda goes, I contacted Steve recently and I'll be honest, I was quite surprised. I called the fire department number. I expected to get a voicemail. And, I mean, it's during the middle of the week, we have a volunteer fire department. I never anticipated the fire chief would be answering the phone during the middle of the day with a volunteer fire department. But he answered, took care of my question, and things went well. So, like I say, I appreciate everybody you have in the positions you have them in. And I just wanted to pass that on to that, uh, you've got a good group of people here and just keep that in mind come January.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, anybody else wish to address the council? Going once, going twice, gone. Okay, the next item is the city engineer's report. Matt, you, I would assume you're gonna take that if there's anything?
Yeah, just one thing to touch on. Um, this Thursday, uh, me and some staff and Bruce and some of his staff, uh, have a meeting with, uh, S E H and Chris, uh, to go over seventy-five percent completion, um, plans. So the twenty-twenty-five project is moving along, um, and hopefully we'll be ready in January to have, or we will be ready in January to have a neighborhood meeting. So that's kind of the update I have for now.
For the city center grading plans, you know, the timeline and getting that final, final grading plan, or can?
I, I can address that. I think we were hoping to get that wrapped up here by the end of the week. And that would help, obviously, the POPS group move forward on kind of finishing up the building designs and everything. And then obviously have that donation agreement come back to the council. So just kind of get those to meld together and, and match.
Great. No surprises with that so far?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Otherwise, we'll move on to item number nine, because there's nothing in between. Resolutions, um, the first one is to adopt the twenty-twenty-five city budget.
Uh, yes, I'll take that. So, um, resolution twenty-four, twelve, sixteen, zero, one, is laid forth to adopt the city budget based on, um, the budget discussions we have had thus far. And I don't have anything to add at this point, but I'm willing to stand for any questions.
Are there any questions for staff?
I, I guess I should mention real quick, um, Councilman Wolf did reach out, uh, with a question about the, fire radios and kind of the balance on that. Within the budget document, uh, if you go under the fire department specifically, um, it has, shows both revenues and we have a couple of revenue lines specifically for the fire departments. And there is a state and county revenue line there, um, that we are budgeting forty thousand dollars this year. That would be the grant revenue that is paying for those radios. So that is the, the balance on that other side, Bruce.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions? Otherwise, I would look for a res, uh, motion to adopt resolution twenty-four, twelve, sixteen dash zero, one.
So moved?
Second.
Maggie made the motion, Bruce seconded it. Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, all, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, the next item up is the twenty-twenty-five official fee schedule.
Yeah, I can just take that briefly. Um, so we had a memo in the packet for your consideration for the fee schedule to be effective, uh, January one, twenty-twenty-five. Um, each of the department heads did go through, uh, the fees that we felt, oh, should be adjusted for the coming year. We can obviously amend at any point. I just wanted to call out a couple of my, um, fees that I wanted to raise. And then, um, we'll pass it along if anybody else has any other, uh, fees. So number one, when we adopted the THC and cannabis ordinance, we did not have a fee listed at that point. We did do a bunch of research with, uh, the state of Minnesota and then other cities. We are limited to what we can charge for that. And we have basically the limit of the fee in the fee schedule that we're proposing for our registration fee locally. And then the annual renewal after that initial, um, time period. And, uh, every city in the state that we researched is doing the exact same fee, uh, for that, that we have in our fee schedule as proposed. I did want to point out, it does not look like anywhere near January one will the state be ready to go with, um, licensing. So we will not be doing registrations. I don't know, Tim, at least through probably the first quarter, if not longer, um, it seemed like. But we have everything in place. We need to tune our end. A couple of things I wanted to point out, um, regarding to the publications, we noted in there that, uh, we would no longer print those, because everything is online for free. If there is a case where somebody just has no means to, to go on the internet and, and view that, we can figure out a way to, uh, come up with a fee for that. But by and large, we have made everything available online, um, so that people can pull that. And if they want to print their own, they can do that. Interim use permit, um, since we've been doing more of those more frequently, um, the staff time to do those, uh, reviews is very similar to a condition use permit, so having those fees mirror each other. And then the last one from planning and building, um, that I wanted to point out, lawn sprinkler permit fee. We've had discussions with, uh, the last couple of street CIP projects. And, uh, wanted to note that, um, we did add an additional fee on there, uh, to cover the review that we take, before we issue those permits to make sure that they're not in the public right of way and that we have those documented, uh, for any review. Should they have proposed that, but obviously they would have a right-of-way encroachment permit at that point. And then the second one is just noting a, um, change of commercial tenant fee. We, we had been doing that on a case-by-case basis. But, uh, by and large, they're pretty, um, quick and easy permits, so we, um, added the flat fee on the fee schedule. And most of the times from people moving in and out of businesses downtown, just to verify that they have, um, ingress and egress for, um, their customers and staff to get in and out of the, uh, buildings, but it really can apply to any commercial building. So that's what I have from the planning and zoning standpoint. I don't know, Bruce, if you have anything from your end.
Just a couple of things. Um, I probably have the most changes on there, but it just goes for, um, how many rate schedules we have on the utility side of things. Not unlike, uh, how the city council approaches their budget, the utilities commission does the same. We did kind of a pre-budget and then, um, I went over what we needed for revenues and then, um, how we wanted to disperse those amongst the rates. I think probably the biggest changes is to the base fee schedules. Really, that's the cost that, uh, that it takes the utility to provide those services to our customers. So we made those changes and then the other changes are just pretty much to keep up with the inflation. Other than that, we are, we rank fairly well against all of our, our peers, our peer cities. So, and maybe even a little bit below most peer, of our peers. So I'll stand for any questions if you would, if you have any on, in regards to utility fees.
Matt, um, do we have a fee when somebody opens up a city, a street or a, um, sidewalk? Do we?
What do you mean?
Grab a deposit?
If they open up a street?
Yep.
Oh, like a road right away if they dig up in a, yes, it's five hundred dollar, uh, deposit and they get that money back if they restore it back to the way we expect it to be?
That's sidewalk two, I would imagine, right?
So I've never collected it for a sidewalk before. I've always collected it just for a street. I've never had issues with, uh, now that you say that, it's probably something we should look into. Yeah, we've never collected for a sidewalk that has been, um, dug into for any reason. It's always just been the street.
And I don't know, does that need to be on this fee schedule, the deposit? I just?
It is on here, the deposit is.
It is? I just didn't see it. Maybe we could change that to include a sidewalk also.
Yeah, we can definitely have that added. Uh, yeah, it's not a bad idea. Yeah, we can just add a road surface slash sidewalk deposit, retit it a little bit.
Yep, because it's, it's a fee that we collect and.
Yeah, varies, I mean, it doesn't happen too often, I'm not gonna lie. It's probably a handful of times a year and I've never, that money has always been given back. They've always restored it, but it's just that it's set up to make sure they restore it so they don't disappear from town.
Exactly.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, any questions on the fee schedule? Otherwise, I'd take a motion to approve. So moved. Rick made the motion, I'll second it. Um, approval of resolution two-four dash one-two dash one-six dash zero-two. Any other questions or concerns? Otherwise, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. The next item is adopting the twenty-twenty-four property tax levy payable in twenty-twenty-five.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is, this resolution twenty-four, twelve, sixteen, zero, three, um, lays out the levy as we've discussed. Leaving for a total of five million, three hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars. Approving in twenty-four, payable by property owners in twenty-twenty-five. And I will stand for any questions if you have them.
I was looking, what's, what is the final tax percentage, the percentage then? Was it ten?
The final percentage is.
Why wouldn't that be listed in the resolution?
Yeah, that's, that's where.
We gotta have that information in there. Moving forward.
I mean, the resolution, I can, the percentage, I can certainly put that in the resolution over last year, generally.
Yeah, we just want as much information as possible. I, it, it just, I, some, it seems a little like we're trying to hide something and I think the taxpayers deserve to be able to read everything about.
I, I guess I can certainly look at putting it in the future. Generally, that resolution lays out what exactly our dollar figure is, um, for this year. It's, it's something that I guess we've never really put in there from the past, but I can certainly look at putting it in the future.
Well, even in the last meeting that we had, it, you know, it's gone from eleven to ten point three, then ten point one, then it was, I don't know, ten point four. There's a lot of numbers carried around and I'd just like to know what it is when we finally adopt it. And I think most people would, uh, most of the taxpayers would too.
So, so that number is ten point one-three percent?
Ten point one-three.
Yeah, I agree that it should be in the resolution as well, just based on, um, what occurred last year. And that way, if we need to provide the resolution, it has not just the dollar amount, but the percentage as well. Just for clarification.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns?
I, my only concern is that it's too high. I think we could have lowered it and done a little better job with it and been a little bit more fiscally astute. But we've discussed it, I don't need to beat that dead horse again, so.
Okay, I would take a motion to offer a resolution two-four dash one-two dash one-six dash zero, three. I'll offer that resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Rick made it a second. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, the next item up is the request for sign variance.
All right, so at the December second, uh, council meeting, this matter was introduced. And, um, I missed the meeting, so I apologize, so, but Josh was able to fill me in and I did watch back, uh, the video. My take on the meeting was that, uh, the council wanted some additional, uh, beautification of the sign, particularly brick along the bottom of the proposed sign. So in the packet, there was a couple of different sign revisions that were forwarded to us. I just labeled them as sign revision number one, which is really, um, the exact one that was in the packet that was considered by planning commission. And it's hard to see in the photo. I'll try to zoom in here a little bit. There was a brick base added onto that sign that you can see on there. And that was obviously an embellishment, um, added by the applicant since the last meeting. And then, um, sign revision number two is more of, I guess I would call it a typical, uh, monument type sign with a wider base, and no opening all the way to the bottom. And that rendering does not show a brick base, but obviously one could be added there too. So those are the two that the, uh, applicant wanted considered here tonight. They also, uh, wanted me to provide, um, some other examples of signs throughout town. So the nearby Speedway sign was actually falls under our old ordinance for, uh, the B-three highway commercial district, where, uh, monopole signs were allowed and no further design embellishments. So you can see on that sign, there's not a brick base or anything, but that, um, actually was conforming under our old ordinance. That dates back fifteen plus years. My apologies, some of these kind of cut off. Um, that was another sign example, uh, here. We'll show Midwest Bank on the east side of town. That sign base has, um, brick along the bottom of that monument type sign with an electronic, uh, message center in the middle there, similar to what they're proposing on signing from the mill. New Prague High School, uh, was asked for a reference on how the proposed sign compared to that. So this one was actually, um, a little smaller than what they're proposing at the mill. But again, this one, uh, we did not require, uh, any brick on the bottom of that. And that was largely due to the fact that it was located in a residential area and we didn't have any design guidelines that went along with that area. So the, that's some of the supplemental information that was provided, so I'm just gonna go back to the, um, two that were in the packet. So really, I think it would come down to, um, your preference. I don't know, uh, if you have any other questions for, uh, Rick and Bill at New Prague Mill, uh, LLC that are here tonight, uh, if you have any questions. But, um, staff's recommendation started these two is that we actually, uh, preferred, uh, revision number two with a brick base. But, um, I think number one obviously would more fit in line with what the planning commission recommended. Obviously with that addition of the brick, uh, along the base there. So with that, I can stand for questions and obviously, uh, as I noted, the applicant is, uh, applicants are here again tonight. Should you have any questions of them?
How tall is the sign revision number two? It's, it's the same. Okay, it just looks different from the, the picture.
Did you explore the waterfall and everything else, some kind of beautification? I mean, I, number two certainly looks a little better than number one, but still, this is the gateway to our historic area, unlike Min, Midwest Bank. And I can't change Speedway at the corner because it was thirty years ago.
We didn't explore it. I, the, the, the last meeting, you talked about vegetation or brick at the bottom of it, so I didn't go further than that. I like the idea of a waterfall. I don't know that I want to put that in and make that a requirement for the sign to make it happen. But I, ultimately, I think I'd like to see that, even though the waterfield has nothing to do with this mill, because it was a steel mill to begin with.
Right.
You know, so, but kind of signifies the mill, so I'd kind of like to see it, or a waterfall of some sort. But I'm not ready to jump into that just yet.
What kind of greenery are you gonna put around it? Are you gonna just leave it that dirt patch there? Are you gonna, is eventually, will that be lawn and grass? And if so, when?
Well, partially, well, first of all, the sign is right next to where the city has their easement, so there's all kinds of flowers that are already there. So I, my envision is that we'll just kind of extend that, what's there, to go underneath it.
I'm trying to envision it, but.
Yeah, I think what they're referring to, Sean, is if you remember back in the, uh, twenty-twenty street project, we have that easement that has the trees and then the other, uh, plantings that were part of that. We'll just say streetscaping at that point. So this abuts right up against that easement because it couldn't go any closer to the road. So I think what you're saying is you would extend like landscaping around that. But other than that, uh, the area around there is really gonna be, end up being parking lot, I believe, um, at some point in the future.
Those trees that are out front that are city property there, how big are those gonna get? Isn't that gonna obstruct the, uh, sign itself?
There's actually a variety, we looked into that. There are a variety that will not get very tall, maybe fifteen foot tall at most. That was a question that I know, uh, Mr. Khan brought up at one point about those. But I forget the exact type of trees. We did look into it, but they're not like a oak tree or maple tree or anything. They're, they're a decorative, uh, ornamental type tree.
Okay. Well, I personally think number two is better than number one. Still not the aesthetically as pleasing as I'd like to see. I think the city should start leaning towards making the commercial buildings kind of adhere to a certain standard, like I see other metro area communities. We only got one shot at it and once it's there, it's there.
Well, I'll tell you about twenty years ago, maybe twenty-five even, I was involved in working with a committee to establish a sign ordinance. And I'll tell you how flat that went. It didn't go very well, but it's very, very hard to establish uniform signage. Especially if you want to make it historical or that, but there's no consensus really, but certainly we could try it again.
I was just, it's not the, the conforming and, and locking in on a particular style of the sign. I think it's just aesthetically. I think it's just aesthetically what, there's a somehow a standard that's established for the community with something like a nice waterfall feature and not just you. I mean, next to McDonald's when those outlaw, outs fill and whatever else. I think Coburn's did a nice job with that one corner sign with, you know, raised up and flowers and stuff around it. I think we just need a.
Well, and I, I know, Sean, as we, as you guys know, we're kind of starting to get into a zoning code update. Um, and there are certainly more communities that are going towards design standards, whether they're residential, commercial, industrial, across the board. I think it's something that will likely come up in discussions as we update our own code is do we want some sort of design standards and what would we certainly like those to be?
I'd like to see that and I'd like to start it with this one.
Yeah, to your point, we don't have that here.
Ken, can you help me again with the reference to the, like, the, uh, Speedway sign, the height? What is a good reference to height for these, uh, that we can see in town already? Is it?
I think we use the light pole. Didn't we use the light pole standing right there?
Yeah, it's about thirty feet.
So, is there a sign, you know, a sign that you had a picture of that is that height?
I would say Speedway has got to be pretty close to that. I don't have an exact measurement on that.
About the tallest sign we have in New Prague, then, thirty feet?
That's the limit on, on every other district. If, if they were built, let's say within the past forty years, that would be the limit, thirty foot.
What's, what's?
Casey's would be the same thing.
Correct.
Okay.
And then on the, the second one, the gray area on the second one, what, what is that material or what?
You want me to go back to the?
Yeah, that one, what? Revision two, what is?
You said in mind, like the gray area?
I think that's just supposed to highlight brick, or that will be, yeah. But there won't be any distance between the sign and the base, so the base is just built up a little higher, like in number one, where you can see through underneath the sign.
You won't see through it in this ex.
No, it'd be like the banks, I think, just more of a solid.
Yes.
Same height?
Same height, though.
Yep.
Okay.
The, the thing with number two, or number one, is that brick is gonna go up to five feet, not like the three feet that it shows. And the plan was, there is a separate electric circuit out there for whatever we want to put in the middle of that, whether it's a waterfall or a future design dedicated to historic downtown, Craig, that we can fill that with. Where if we block that solid off, then we have to double whatever we're gonna do on both sides to make it visible. That's kind of why we left that open for whatever, even if we put plants in the middle of the thing, you know, depending on the season. We want to be able to utilize that as open space, not closed off, and then try to put some sandwich on both sides.
In number one, you're talking.
Right.
That's good in theory. I mean, I like that idea and I would hope that, if that's the way it is, but number one to me looks like something that should be out on the highway. Where number, like the banks on the other side of town, just that s- standard monument block.
Yep.
Where the Coburn's one that's raised up on a bed of brush and they're, you know.
I was hoping to get that, the one that was cut off, that one picture?
Here, Rick, Rick, I'm gonna pull up in my email. We should be able to get to that here.
Cause the side posts on that one were much more.
There we go, that one.
That's more what I'm thinking that we're looking at instead of the, the iron posts that you'll see.
Oh, so it'd be brick and not iron posts?
Right, more poured, a finished look versus just steel.
Oh, okay. Well, that certainly looks, would look better than the other one.
We didn't have the time to spend with the architect to pull everything together like we wanted.
Well, I'm in favor of the sign revision number two.
I would too.
Motion second? So, if there's not any other questions, I would take a motion to approve resolution outlining the sign revision number two.
So moved.
I'll second.
So, um, Sean made the motion, there's second by Maggie. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck.
Okay, the next item up is an active transportation grant.
Yep, so I'll take that one. Um, if I can find it. Yeah, so as the council recall, um, earlier this year, we were awarded a grant from the act of, active transportation grant from, uh, MINDOT for, uh, the trail and or sidewalk along Twelfth Avenue over by Settlers Park down to Tekolski Street. Um, the other one we had applied for was the trail through the industrial park, which would be an eight foot and, uh, Batuminous Trail. We were not awarded that one, so they are once again opening up that grant application for two thousand and twenty-five. So, this is what, uh, we would be looking for your support for, with the resolution to apply for that once again. They changed some of the criteria in the active transportation grant for two thousand and twenty-five. Initially, they said we didn't qualify because this project was in Scott County, but we had gone through the, um, research, uh, that we had done with them, that we are not part of the Met Council and they allowed us to apply. And one of the things we had to do is show that we're connecting from, uh, a state highway back over to a major collector road through the industrial park. So, we had to extend the trail just slightly from where the industrial park kind of ends at, uh, obviously Truck Highway twenty-one and then Bricks Bolt Works, and then there's kind of that field, but extend the trail over to Eleventh Avenue. So, it was another, I think, a hundred fifty feet, two hundred feet at most, um, into the application. So, we could make that full connection through there and then you hit the north-south trail along Eleventh Avenue. So, that was one change that we made to the project. Um, so what we'd be requesting would be about three hundred and three thousand, three hundred dollars, um, in, uh, active transportation grant money. That would mean that we would have to cover from a local match to the engineering and design portion, which is about seventy-five thousand, eight twenty-five. This is an EDA, um, project that, um, the EDA has been, um, you know, responsible for since the plating of the property back in two thousand and fifteen. So, obviously, if we can get that, uh, grant money, that will significantly save the EDA, uh, money to have for other projects down the road. So, that's what we're looking for tonight and be the approval of the resolution to, uh, approve the application and have that move forward in, uh, mid-January when that is due to be submitted.
Any questions?
I had a question about the other, uh, section that we got the money for.
Yeah.
And that's the east side of Settler Park, and right then.
So, it will actually start, uh, at Settlers Park and then cross at the, I guess it would be the south, um, intersection where Tenth Street Southeast kind of loops from Twelfth back to Twelfth. Um, so it'll cross over and then follow the east side down. One thing Matt and I talked about with, um, Chris Knutson was, uh, why we're, uh, crossing the road. And there was some driveway, um, elevations that, uh, made it very difficult to continue it down the west side of the road. And I don't know if that's still being looked at, Matt, by Chris. Yeah, it won't fit, so it, it does have to cross over and then go south, uh, down to Tekolski from that Tenth Street Circle area. Just too steep when you hit the driveways along that, um, immediate section south of the park there.
I'm having a hard time visi- visualizing this. So, it's, it doesn't follow Twelfth Avenue Southeast?
Yes, along Twelfth Avenue Southeast, but.
Follows that all the way down?
But it crosses the road. It will cross basically right across the street from the south softball field. It'll cross Twelfth and then head all the way south to Tekolski from that point. Oh, Josh is on top of it. Can get it loaded up.
So, is this going front, in front of those homes then?
Be on the east side of those homes that have all the driveways. We're actually on the other side because we cannot.
Okay.
Do we always have a stain when we do any of these sidewalks?
Oh, go. Oh, Mitch is doing it. Oh, Josh got it pulled up here too.
Okay, so it actually won't catch more than one or two homes then?
It's gonna catch two properties instead of four on the west side with four driveways. We're actually not going through any driveways by being on the east side.
Okay.
So, here, I'll let you drive. This is gonna be interesting. All right, so it's gonna come, um, basically along here, along the park.
Yep.
Cross over near the intersection at Tenth and then follow, like Matt said, so we're not crossing any driveways. It'll be kind of in side yards down to Tekolski or that, down to Twelfth and then continue.
Okay.
What it's doing. Anyway, continue all the way down to Tekolski Street and then, uh, meet up with that sidewalk there.
Okay, well, thank you. I had a hard time understanding the narrative, trying to.
Yep.
Figure that.
And that's the one that we have funding on and is in the two thousand and twenty-five CIP work.
Okay. So, do you feel the grading on this new applications, we have a good chance or decent chance or?
They change, with the change in the criteria, we believe we have a better chance for it. And, um, this was for outstate only before we were in a pot with, uh, more metro communities. So, um, hopefully we'll, we'll score a little better this time.
Okay.
Then it'll be a third, this'll be the third year we've, uh, applied for that.
And that'll hook up to the, the, uh, trail on twenty-eight there and con, on highway, on the backside of? On Twelfth Street, or does it go through the yards on the?
Oh, yeah, you can, you can get down on Tekol- Tekolski from like Olivia Street, yes.
Oh, okay.
I, I think there's what, like half a block? Half a block, you gotta kind of jog on the sidewalk, get down there, but, yep.
All right, any other questions? Otherwise, I'd take a motion to approve the active transportation grant resolution.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion by Sean, seconded by Bruce. Um, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. The next one is supporting MINDOT safe routes to school grant application.
All right, so this one is actually an application that the New Prague Area School District is making for improvements near, uh, Raven Stream Elementary, Falcon Ridge Elementary and New Prague High School. Uh, with the budget cuts that they have experienced recently, they had to enlarge their walking distances and cut some bus routes, um, that particularly were affected by these three schools that I just mentioned. Um, while the school is actually the applicant, we are helping them with, um, some of the background information on this and we are also required to act as a project sponsor as we are a state aid city. So, um, this resolution would, um, provide support for the school's application, uh, for the Safe Route School Grant. There is no monetary, um, commitment by the city upfront for the construction, design or implementation of these. Um, one thing, and Matt brought up the question to me before, um, I'm assuming, but I'm actually gonna do a little more checking. I assume that the city will be responsible long-term if we are, or if the school is awarded funds and these go in the right way, that we'd have to take care of the upkeep. But I will verify that, um, before we, if we are awarded any money, before we accept anything. Um, again, this would include, um, and I'm not gonna pull up the maps here because they're, they're kind of, uh, difficult to read, but, um, some rough reflective, uh, flashing beacons at, uh, three locations near the high school and Falcon Ridge Elementary and then one near Raven Stream Elementary. And then, uh, new sidewalk that would basically run, um, on the side of the road of Twelfth Street between the, uh, community center, um, the alternative school and ultimately connect up, uh, with, uh, where, uh, the trail or the sidewalk at English Avenue comes out of that neighborhood. There's also a sidewalk on the north side of the road there too, but this would be a south, uh, of the road sidewalk and it should help not only for football games and other events at the community center, but just general, um, traffic in and around the area. So, school district did pass their own resolution at their last board meeting and this, again, would just be supporting their, uh, application. And again, no monetary, um, commitment by the city, uh, for the construction, um, implementation and design and, um, engineering at this point.
Can you tell me what those signs are gonna look like? Is it like the ones by Hy-Vee?
It'd be the, just like the ones at Hy-Vee. These would actually be solar, I believe, is what they're applying for. Those ones at Hy-Vee are hardwired and we may look at changing that up. I don't know. I've talked to Bruce about that even, but, um, that'd be the only difference.
But that's, that's what they're talking about, is one like that or on Main Street or?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Otherwise, I'll offer resolution twenty-four dash twelve dash sixteen dash zero two. Is there a second?
Second.
Rick seconded it. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. All right, um, next, we're up to general business. Um, we're gonna be looking at the twenty-five through two thousand and thirty-four capital improvement plan.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, this is the plan that kind of has been discussed and massaged here throughout the year. Um, as you remember, uh, we, we, or before you ever got it, we kind of, uh, worked with staff to say, what do we need? What don't we need? Um, what can be pushed, what really can't be pushed? And that's the list that we started with. Um, and I guess since then, we've been working with you kind of throughout the budget process on this. And so, the capital improvement plan that you have before you is that one, um, that matches up the budget that we just looked at here a few minutes ago. And I will stand for any questions you may have.
Um, I have a couple. The twenty-five thousand for office decks, uh, desks and uppers and privacy panels, didn't we just do that?
We did that.
Prior to you, I think Mike was still in here.
Yes, we did that on the finance utility side of the office. It didn't get done on the other half of the office. And so, I think, I believe if that carpet was, what, twenty-five?
Uh, twenty years old.
Twenty years old, um, and I think the desks were older than that.
Yes.
And so, uh, that number actually would be, we started out at forty thousand. We had come down to that number as we were able to find some good deals on office equipment and whatnot for in there, so.
Okay, I, I guess I didn't rea- I, I thought the last time we did it a few years ago, that it included the entire office area. The vehicle replacement, um, that's right below, that is that a brand new car? I thought we've been trying to utilize the old police officers' cars.
Under the building inspections?
Under buil- uh, yeah.
Uh, that one is not getting done in twenty-five, that's.
No, I, I know, but as it moves out, and I know that we can change this obviously, but I'm just kind of curious, why are we?
Yeah, so I can answer that. So, the idea behind that was we have a twenty eighteen, we went wrong on the exact year of the building inspection vehicle right now. That one should have pretty low miles, uh, move that after it's ten years, I believe, at that point, and then have another new one come in. We've been using an old squad car. We're running into little maintenance issues here and there with those, but nothing bad. But, um, this would be to avoid trading in the twenty eighteen Ford Escape. Keep that in the fleet for the building department and have a new one brought in. And then that should be very, uh, good for the long term. We'll just put new tires on that vehicle here in twenty, uh, twenty-four.
And, and I guess, kind of answer that question too, Sean, uh, being that it is two, three years in the future.
Yeah.
Um, I would much rather plan that if, if we have to build something, we know the number's there and then we get there and hey, look, we can swap out a squad car and make that number go away. So, that, that really is kind of the, the future planning if we have to do it.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I, I guess I wanted to have you guys thinking about that.
Yeah.
And, and, yeah, the other thing is we're trying to replace the two thousand nine Ford Fusion that, uh, the planning department uses. So, that's not long for this world, so there's only so many squad cars around every year that we can trade out.
To swap them out, okay.
Yeah. But if we can.
Any other questions on the capital improvement plan?
Make a motion to approve the twenty-five through thirty-four capital improvement plan as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, there's motion by Bruce, seconded by Maggie. Um, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Approval of the twenty-five through thirty-four visioning document, which pretty much piggybacks a lot of this.
Yep, so that would piggyback, I guess, some of the highlights we're looking forward to in twenty-five is working with Ellers, our new financial consultants to get our long-term financial plan completed, um, updating our city zoning code and then also working with our surrounding townships to, uh, make sure our orderly annexation agreements with them are up to date and, um, both the county, or both the townships and the city feel good about where those are at. So, um, I can certainly stand for any other questions that may be in there, um, but that is where we're at.
Okay.
I see you, you added the, the police and the city center, so.
Yes.
Thanks for that.
All right, I would take a motion for approval of that document.
I'll make a motion for, to approve the twenty twenty-five through two thousand and thirty-four visioning document.
I'll second it. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Compensation pay plan twenty-five, twenty twenty-five.
Yes, this is the compensation plan that, um, we started working with at the beginning of the budget cycle, um, and kind of worked through that where our current budget stands now. Throughout those discussions, uh, we looked at a two point eight percent adjustment for all non-union positions in twenty-five and then with the recently. And then with the recently approved police union agreement, they have a four percent adjustment for twenty-five. So those both of those have been included in this, and I can certainly stand for any questions you may have.
Uh, this is compensation plan, not the study, right?
Correct, yes. So by compensation plan, this is just where where it's landing for twenty-five. The study will come potentially, we'll we'll discuss the proposal in the in the recent future or near future here, and then go from there. This would just be the plan for twenty twenty-five.
Okay, I I want to separate the two, but I I don't want to get it. Let's do this first, but then I do have a question. I could wait till miscellaneous too on the compensation study.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, I'll make note.
All right. Does anybody have questions on the Compensation P Plan? Otherwise, I'd take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion by Rick, seconded by Maggie. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries. Twenty twenty-five golf course consultant agreement.
Uh, yes, this is the agreement that we discussed during our budget sessions. Of note, there is a two percent increase over twenty twenty fours, and that is really the big, big change in the agreement. So in twenty twenty-four, we are agreed to pay one hundred thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars. And in twenty twenty-five, the agreement we discussed during the budget process would be to increase that two percent to one hundred and two thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty cents. Stand for any questions you may have.
And that's down from?
The original request was close to five percent. Correct.
Okay, any questions on that? Otherwise, I'd take a motion to approve the golf manager contract.
So moved.
There's been a motion by Maggie. Is there a second? I'll second it. Any other discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries. Item E, Flock Safety Camera Agreement.
What the flock?
Aside from the memo that you have there, we identified some in our long-term planning two, three years ago to implement some some cameras for security and investigative purposes throughout the city. So we were fortunate enough this year to apply and receive a grant for the seventy-five thousand dollars. Worked with city staff and and some of the police staff in identifying what would work best for us. And we we settled on the the Flock Safety Cameras. What we we came up with was eight, eight total cameras. Four of those have license plate readers, and four of them are stationary cameras. The stationary cameras would be placed in in parks. And then some of the license plate reader cameras would be placed along some of the roadways within within the city. There's, Flock is kind of growing in popularity. More recently, I think in some of the documents that I sent you, had some of the agencies that are currently using it. Right now, Shakopee, Prior Lake, Faribault, and Rochester are all in the process of acquiring these as well. So some more agencies that are closer to us. The ability to share information on these with these cameras is really really paramount for us. Some of the success stories that have come from these are are really good. One of the other benefits with Flock is that our businesses in town, if they so choose, could join onto this program for three hundred dollars a year, and they could share all their data with us, their information with us. So another huge benefit there. Unlimited users. So we could have our dispatch center log into these cameras and see things that they're reporting like real time. So they could see before we even got there what's happening or what a caller is telling us is actually happening or provide some other information. I reached out to the county, both counties, to see if they're interested in doing that. And they're bringing that to their their local governments to see whether that's an option for us. So I think there's some real potential here to take that next step and and move forward with this. So we're really excited about it.
Where are the four stationary cameras gonna go?
Uh, the four right now, we have set for Memorial Park, Skate Park, South Side Park, and Sellers Park.
Outside of of some teenage vandalism, is there other reasons that you're putting them in those parks?
We've.
There been other nefarious activities or?
We, well, in working with Matt and Jim, the amount of vandalism that we see is and just the things that happen and get reported to us. Aside from vandalism, we get suspicious people, suspicious cars, people in the parks at night. Notably, down at South Side and Settlers Park, we've had an increase in the amount of driving complaints that we see. And the callers will call, and by the time we get there, didn't get a license plate, we have a a red truck. Without any information to go on beyond a red truck, it becomes difficult for us to 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 follow up with that. So putting these in kind of different areas throughout town is gonna kind of give us coverage as best we can with with that number of cameras that we have.
I I just want to make sure I understand this a little bit better. I mean, I'm all for public safety and whatnot. So if a teenager takes off on twelfth street and squeals his tire going around the corner, you would have him on camera, and now you know it's a red truck, you know the license plate. So then are you gonna go there and then write him a ticket for that, for unlawful acceleration or whatever it is?
I think it provides us the next step in what we're gonna do, right? So whether that's a ticket or not, I couldn't, I don't know what the circumstances are for every situation. But that gives us an opportunity to go and follow up with that call and say what is going on. Like, if someone calls and says, I saw a red truck, and we say, well, sorry, we we don't have any more information than that. There's eight thousand red trucks.
Right, but you can see where I think a lot of people are gonna be, they might gonna get a speeding ticket or a moving violation because I rolled through a stop sign when nobody's there.
It's not something that we're gonna.
Because somebody called and said, hey, I just saw my neighbor roll through a stop sign.
Yeah, no, it's not. It's it's not that type of situation. This is gonna be for for things that we're not gonna sit and watch it and say, oh, you know, we just saw this car go through a stop sign, and this car go through a stop sign. That's not what it's utilized for. So we want to provide service to the community when they call, and we want to have a resource to help us investigate the calls that we're getting dispatched to.
Yeah, I see that. But do you see our, I I just think a lot of people are gonna think this is really creepy that I can't do anything anymore without a camera on me somewhere somehow. And then how is that protected, that data protected? In a sense that it can't be, we see data breaches all the time that.
The data they have, Flock Safety has their own data protections in the cloud. In those documents, they have their their data protection, and it's not something that is going to be. I don't want, I don't want to say the word big brother, right? But it's not, it's not we're gonna sit here and watch and say, oh, here's a violation, here's a violation, here's a violation. But for all the traffic complaints that we get, for the people that come and talk to the council about vehicles that I almost got hit on the road because I was running, right, those types of conversations. That gives us another tool to investigate those types of things and say, we can actually do something about that now.
See, I'm kind of coming at it from a different angle, Sean, because, you know, I get the comments, well, when are we gonna try to stop these guys running stop signs? And I see it most often because I drive Chalupski by Quick Trip, and it's pretty common by daycare that. It's not unusual for people to run that, and I've missed people significantly there. So as we had that resident last year for a while, they complained about people running stop signs by their house, and they took their own video of it. I wouldn't think this tool would be would be used for monitoring those kind of circumstances that maybe you're not gonna have it there all the time, but if you have. I thought it would be a tool that would be used to try to help improve runners that literally run the stop sign. So, but you're saying that it wouldn't be used that way.
Where where they're placed, right, we're not gonna, we're not gonna take a camera and move it to a spot. These are gonna be placed in an area, and they'll remain there. So if we want to relocate them, we can do that, but these aren't gonna be moved around to different areas throughout town. These cameras.
We have four permanent station, stationary, and the four are, are they mobile or not mobile?
They're not mobile.
None of them are mobile?
Nope.
So there's only four cameras or I thought there's eight?
There's eight, so four of the stationaries and then four, so there's eight total. They're all stationary cameras. Four of them have the capability to re-license plates. Four of them do not.
And what are you looking for for that when you run license plates? Their tabs are expired by a day or, I mean, I just want to make sure it doesn't get that drilled down. And it could, it does feel a little big brother-y.
I guess, why don't you explain what an officer can cite and not cite for off of, based off of a camera? It's unconstitutional in Minnesota.
Yeah, we can't.
Those types of cameras.
We're not gonna stop, we can't stop a vehicle for expired registration and and things like that based on the state statute. So what the camera's doing is it's finding people with warrants, people with wanted people hits, vehicles that other agencies are looking for that have called cops alerts out on them. And then it 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 will.
Stolen cars.
Yeah, stolen vehicles, stolen trailers, stolen, all all these types of things that are out there. They won't, it's not something that we're gonna go and say, oh, we have eight vehicles that went by with expired registration. That's not what this is for. So bigger, bigger crimes. And then the agencies that are are in on this, that are connected to this, if we have a vehicle that we only get a side image from, say, and then we can enter some data into this system and say, okay, we're looking for a red vehicle with a New Prague basketball sticker on the back. And it's at, it goes through one of the cameras in Faribault. Then maybe we get the front license plate and the driver.
Still a little unclear on this then. So this is, information does not get fed into a database that would say this car is stolen?
It would already be in the system as stolen.
If a car drives out in front of this camera, would the system go through the database and flag you to tell you that this car was stolen?
If it was enters a stolen vehicle, it would, yes. So when we take a report of a stolen vehicle, we entered into called NCIC. So then that information is then stored, and it's the same if we would, if we drove by it in a squad car and ran the plate, that would come back as a stolen vehicle. This is just another tool for us, another area. So every vehicle that goes by, we would see that data.
So all four of these readers will always be reading license plates?
Yes.
Always?
Yep. And that data is retained for for thirty days.
Do you set the criteria as far as when it it pops up and tells you like what things it will tell you? Like, this one's stolen or this one's got a Amber Alert or?
Yes.
That?
Yeah, you can set it for the NCIC to get all the NCIC hits that are entered. So if it it's attached to a cops alert or a stolen vehicle or whatever that looks like, you can adjust those settings.
Who's gonna make that determination what those settings are?
Normally, our policy, policies, agencies have policies, and we will write a policy that says what we use it for, data retention, and what we can and can't do with it.
I mean, I think we're all in agreement that Amber Alerts and stolen vehicles and things like that make a lot of sense. But, you know, you can see where it could get out of hand too, where you're pulling people over that, you know, maybe they had their license revoked or something, but somebody's using their car. Well, it's not fair that you pull that person off just for using the guy's, somebody's car that shouldn't be driving and isn't driving.
Right, and there's some, you know, there's some statutory things that go along with that, right? If there's somebody driving a vehicle, we have to be able to ascertain who the who the driver is, right? Like, we're not just gonna stop a vehicle based on that, so.
You sure? Because it seems like, it seems like you could run the plates and at, in the middle of the night, and the person that owns that car has their license revoked, and it shouldn't be out on the road. Well, it it shouldn't be driven by them, but that doesn't mean their wife or their brother or their son.
But you have to ascertain.
How do we know, right?
Or?
Right, how do you know?
Right.
That's my point. So you'd make a stop, and then you'd ascertain that it wasn't. But that isn't fair for that person, just because they're driving the wrong vehicle, that they're being stopped. That's where the complaints I'm gonna get, you know? Because, and they will, because.
I guess that's part of what we do, right? That's that's our job.
Not just pulling people over to find out why they're in town or what they're doing. I mean, I've had complaints.
We're stopping them because it's showing that they're revoked, right? Not because they're in town.
No.
There's a reason for that stop.
The the license, the the car that it's registered to, that person's license is revoked. That doesn't mean that somebody can't use that car, another family member, a friend.
Right.
A relative. But yet you run that license plate, it's assigned to a revoked license. Now you make a stop for an innocent person and detain them. And that isn't fair to that person, just because they happen to be driving a car that's registered to someone that has a revoked license. That's the nitty gritty that it gets down into that you're making, you know? I mean, I've had complaints from our police officers that they get pulled over and they go, what are you doing in town? Well, that's none of your business. Maybe I can't sleep. Maybe I go for a drive at night. You know, maybe I'm going, you know, I mean, they went and asked who's, he said, the gal that I talked to said, I'm going to my boyfriend's house. Well, who's your boyfriend? Oh, well, that's none of your business either, but, well, where does he live? Well, he lives on Sunrise. I mean, that interrogation isn't part of what they should be doing. If they pulled her over because she was going five miles over in a thirty-five and a thirty, then write her a ticket. But the questioning is the the complaints that I get, and that's happened many times. And I think I've addressed it with you. I brought it up. At least if it wasn't to you, it was to Jim before you. So it just seems a little, you know, I mean, there's a lot of good that can come out of it, but ultimately, there's some negative things that I just, I have a fear that I'll I'm gonna hear about aggressive officers that. And then the next thing, what I'm worried about is this is gonna perpetuate more stops. And then it becomes a fiscal budget issue because now it's, well, we we did thirty-five hundred stops last year compared to twenty-seven hundred. So I need two more police officers. And then it's a, then it's more of a budget issue. So, I mean, I think it could be a good tool, but I still have some reservations on it.
I just want to make, I still, I apologize, I'm a little confused on this again. So if you you have on camera that someone ran a stop sign, you can't write a ticket for that. Is that correct?
You, correct, right? Minnesota says that that can't happen. We, no, our body camera and our squad cameras are different. That's evidence that's in our squad car that we saw, right?
The usefulness then, if I understand it, is someone calls you and says, this person ran a stop sign. And then you go to the film and you see, yeah, they did. Then you could write them a ticket.
Well, or you call them and probably tell them, hey.
You can use it as proof, but you can't use it as.
Correct. Yes, for the the only reason.
Reason for doing it.
That's correct.
Interesting. I kind of envisioned when you were gonna say where they're gonna be. I assume that you'd have Main Street in and out of town covered.
So right now, the state of Minnesota is one of two states that doesn't allow them in the road right of way, in a state highway.
Do they have to be in the right of way to be able to get a camera picture?
Yes. Yeah, so right now, they're doing a, they're doing a study in Blaine right now with the Flock cameras. And I think it's part, partially so the state understands how the system works. So right now, there are squad cars out there that drive up and down the roads that have license plate readers in the squad cars, which really isn't any different than the road right of way. So I think part of that discussion is being had between the state and Flocks. They have a little better understanding of how the system works.
Yeah, that's that's really unfortunate because of most of the crime, people leave on Main Street or twenty-one.
Right. And ideally, you want to see who's coming in and who's going out, right? So you have this report of of burglary that happened, and then you can see where that vehicle entered town, where they left, where they, you know, kind of follow the vehicle if you if you would.
Then I was wondering, do you feel that this is gonna require any more staff time or administrative expense to manage it?
I think there'll be some initial setup to get it going and see how it works. But once it, once it starts, once we get everything going and set up, I don't think that it will. Because each each officer will have their own user, and they can go in. I think it, I think it'll provide our investigations and the information that we have. I think it'll be a really good thing for them to be able to go in and say, do we have any more information that we can find? Is there something that we saw?
This is a three-year plan with a two-year renewal. Is there any guarantee of what the renewal cost would be at the two-year cycle? Or is it, is there any benefit to the two-year renewal? Portion to it, are they giving us any fixed renewal pricing or anything like that?
Beyond the three-year that we have here right now, no, there's nothing beyond that. So part of when I was looking at this is I wanna see how this works. And then at the end of three years, if this isn't something that we wanna continue with or if we wanna do more or less, we can, we can reanalyze that and see what's working for us and what isn't if it doesn't, so.
I'm not saying we should do this, but like a lot of contracts I've worked with in the past, if you sign up for it, then automatically cancel the renewal so you don't get caught up in an automatic renewal.
Yeah.
If there's no benefit to it, like they're not gonna give you a better pricing because you're already a customer?
Yeah, with this, I, I reached out to them last week or a week or so ago and we have some additional conversation. And they're gonna, they're gonna waive the initial setup fee for us, which was four thousand dollars, which allowed us to add another camera for this three years. So beyond the three years right now, we don't have, we don't have anything planned and that's something that we can look at as we get into this. Like, what does this look like moving forward beyond the three years?
I'm certainly supportive of it, but I, I, I see it as kind of a project that with no guarantees that'll be around in the fourth year, depending upon what value you find in it. And is it really producing for us? Are we gaining some productivity? Are we gaining some efficiency? Is it gonna pay for itself in the future? And I think that's a high hurdle to try to challenge ourselves to figure out, are we gonna gain twenty-five thousand dollars worth of savings or added benefit to police service because of this? Because in that fourth year, I mean, that's a extra expense that we'd be locked into.
Right.
And, um.
And I think that's what we use this three years for, right? Is to get that data and see what that does for us in the three years.
Yeah, I think it should be on everyone's calendar, in three years, are we canceling it or are we keeping it? That it just automatically doesn't renew inside.
Yeah, no, it wouldn't automatically renew because we would have to enter into another contract.
Yeah.
So.
We should track staffs.
In the form of a contract, not a lease, which I think by law, lease we have to approve annually. But so I think that, I'm not sure if they're getting around that. But isn't that true, Josh? A lease is, we, we can't by law approve a long-term lease.
I do not know contract laws.
For it, but, um, I just don't want us falling into automatically, oh, yeah, we're gonna provide a.
Yeah, I know.
Report on the study of what happened in the last three years and all, whoops, twenty-five thousand dollars renewed.
Yeah, and I have some ideas to track how we're using it and how the benefits that it's provided the community throughout this, this three-year run here.
And these are all the people that are using it, this list right now?
Uh, it, that was a list, yeah, there's been some additionals that have been added to that since then, so.
I mean, besides Belle Plain, they're all big cities, basically. I wonder if we're not a little too far ahead of the curve. I don't see Lakeville, I don't see Shakopee, I don't see Prior Lake, I don't think Sea Savage, they're all much bigger, have much bigger problems than I would think that we do.
Yeah, as I, as I said earlier, Shakopee, Prior Lake, Faribault are all in the, in the process of it right now. I just talked with Shakopee and Prior Lake earlier or late last week and they were finalizing their contracts similar to what we're doing right now.
Faribault's on here, I mean, maybe we should wait and see a little bit and see if we can get some data on it from, it's a lot of money and it's a big contract. And it does feel a little invasive as far as I'm concerned.
And this is all grant money.
It's not costing the city.
So it is used with, with grant money that I was able to secure, so.
Well, it'll cost us in a different way, maybe not the city of New Prague, but our other tax dollars.
Like you said, it really liked it for you to be able to keep track of or log, you know, what savings you're able to achieve or additional service and either staff time, overtime, or whatever.
Yeah, every, every agency that I've talked to that utilizes these said that they have paid for themselves within the first year.
And then when you say you have it at a park, does it rotate or is it just a single picture frame?
It'll, it'll, it'll be like on a pole, so it'll have a three sixty degree range on it. And you can zoom in and zoom out and there are some features that, well, if an officer had it up at night and they were out patrolling and someone entered the park at Southside Park and you were up by the high school, you could look at that and see what's going on at Southside Park. Right? To see if someone's, you know, if people are running around or what exactly is going on down there, so.
But it has the potential to be a great addition to the safety issues, especially in the parks.
Well, I think of the, what was that, four years ago when we had that real severe assault over there? At Southside.
At Southside, correct, yeah.
There's a young man running around with a traumatic brain injury.
Yep.
And it took a lot of time to investigate.
It did, yes.
So. Well, I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Flock Safety Camera.
Second.
It's been a motion, second, is there any other discussion? Hearing on, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. All right, now we're down to miscellaneous. What's that?
I'm just, just commenting, I'm gonna be curious as to see how that, how this works and if there's gonna be any issues with it.
We're down to miscellaneous, uh, discussion. Are you gonna go over the quarter three ambulance or is that just for, just like everything else?
Yep, I wasn't planning on it, but I can certainly.
Well, it's how it's listed here, she should put discussion at the bottom of items down on the agenda.
Oh, yeah.
So, next time.
Yeah, that, yeah, it is, it is just the update from the last meeting.
All right. Does anybody have any questions on that? Otherwise I'll go around the horn. Rick, I'll start with you. Bruce?
Unfortunately, I'm gonna ask the same question, uh, a police chief on, on active shooter drills. How often have we, have we done them this year again? Or do we do drills, like, or is it all tabletop type of things?
With the schools?
Yeah.
We, we have ongoing discussions with the schools. Um, to set up an active shooter drill is, um, it gets to be a lot, not that we don't do them. But I don't know, uh, uh, we've talked with the schools about doing one again. We've done a lot of tabletop and a lot of Zach and, um, the school administration have gone to a lot of, they go to a conference, I just went to one here this summer and it's more of preparation rather than it is the actual act of going through the drill itself. So how to prepare for it and how to respond to it, um, reunification, we've been working with them a lot on that. And more of, more of the safety and how do we prevent it rather than actually going through it is what we've really been working on. So to actually, to actually do the drill, we haven't had a discussion about that with the school recently. Um, but we could certainly revisit that again, um.
Do, do they do drills? I mean, like.
They, they do lockdown drills and, yep, and we, we went through a, a kind of a new protocol with them over the summer. So they changed their language to align a little better, so it's a little simpler, so lockdown, lockout. So it's, it's very clear as to what they're gonna do in a different situation. So if there's a, a spill at chart, there's no, you know, nobody's in immediate danger, but they, nobody can leave this school. That language has changed, so it's more streamlined for, for staff and students to all be better aligned in what they're, what they're to do in different situations, if that makes sense.
So do you, do you, um, in your tabletop review, do you do it with a, a school representative with you?
Yes.
And is Saint Vincent that also?
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And how would you grade our training and preparedness?
Uh, I will tell you that when our, our school staff and, and Zach went to, uh, the training this summer, uh, they led the conversation. They were very, um, we were way ahead of the curve and that was down in Rochester. And, um, other school and administrators and even police departments were very impressed with the, the response that we had established and how we utilize things and how we notify and our whole process. So that was really refreshing to hear and know that we were, we were a couple steps ahead of everyone. So I'm, I'm, I feel really, really good about where we're at with that right now.
And do all our new police officers get, um, orientated to all the school buildings?
They do, yep. They go around with, uh, we take an afternoon and our school resource officer takes them around and gives them the tour and shows them the, the ins and outs and the different doors and keys and all those types of things.
Great, thank you, that's all I got.
Well, it's good to hear because, well, today there was a mass shooting in Madison at that. And, and the last few have been at private schools, Christian schools, which is really.
Seventeen-year-old girl.
Not even public schools, so, you know, and so, that's, he has to, it makes me feel good too, so. Sean?
Two things, one, um, the, there seems to be a, a junkyard behind Rusty Spoke there. Vehicles that are flat tires, not drivable, um, pulled off the engine. And now they put a big black screen up, I'm guessing to keep snow and ice and everything else from getting in on the engine. But can we do something about that? I mean, start writing tickets?
Yeah, we have written tickets on.
Where are we at that? Let's keep doing it or maybe since we got our fee schedule and we have, we were talking about that, maybe we could make it more punitive.
Yeah, and we did, we, we did write citations to them and it, it's a matter of working with the county attorney's office to get those citations to go through.
Okay.
Maybe to piggyback on Sean, maybe we need to go after them civilly with our city attorney and sue them civilly and, and be done with them.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can certainly explore every option we have.
You know, because if, if we can't, you know, criminally they get a hundred dollar fine or something, big deal. But civilly, we'd be able to hold them to some conditions.
Uh, I would be all for that and I think there's a couple other.
Yep.
Addresses too, but that one was specifically brought up to me a couple times. Okay, so it's nice to know that it's being worked on and it's, um, in the process. The other one was the compensation study, um, when we do that, I feel like it should be the council's job to do the hiring for that. I don't know if we wanna look at proposals or not as opposed to city staff picking for that, cause I don't want them to think that they're working for you. I wanna be very specific in that we're not cherry picking individual cities out in comparison.
So, so my thought on how that whole process would go is we'd kinda go out for an RFQ, request for qualifications, like we have for many other projects, um, get those qualifications in. And then ultimately it would be on to the council as to who, we, we might bring forward recommendations like pros and cons that we as staff see for them, like we do with a lot of stuff. And then ultimately the council would choose who we go with. Once we got into the process, I would fully see the council as part of that process, including making sure that you all are comfortable with who we are considering to be our peer cities and who we wanna compare with.
But you're doing the interviewing process. I, I, I think it's important that the, the advisory firm knows they're working for the council and not for city staff. Because it directly relates to you and you could see where that could create a conflict of interest.
Yeah, so I mean, along those lines, the council, we can certainly, um, any, any, any meetings of, any time more than, three or more council members would get together, that'd be considered a public meeting. But we could certainly have one or two council members on the committee, um, to both speak for the council and to be able to report back what they see as well. I mean, that.
Yeah, I kinda envisioned that maybe before a meeting, we could have an opportunity to interview whomever, three different.
Well, I will say, I mean, we can certainly look into that. It would be, there's certainly an open public meeting that at that point if the whole council was to act as one.
Right, and I understand that it would be open, people could come and listen, but I just, I think it's more important that they know that they're working for the council and not for people that are.
No, I understand. I, I'm, I'm just letting you know how it's generally commonly done, I don't know.
No, I know, it's, it's kinda bothered me in the past and I've always brought that up, that, that, um, you know, you're essentially picking somebody that wants to continue to do this business with you on an ongoing basis. So it's real easy to, well, I know this is gonna benefit them. They'll come back and show me a little love later, again, when the next one comes up.
I guess I would hope that that is not happening because I, I know.
You can see where it could.
I will say myself, Sean, as well as every member up here, does take our job very seriously. And it's almost offensive to assume that we are acting.
I'm not, I'm not saying you guys are doing it, I'm saying that they could do it just to get in good graces with you. I'm not accusing you or anybody of your staff. I'm saying they should know that they work for the council, not for the city administrator, the, the executive staff of the city. And you're the one that typically interviews them and then submits a bit or two to us. And then they run and they do this and you, all the interaction is with you guys, not with us during this process and the study. And I just, I think there's a little bit of a conflict of interest there and I, well, Dwayne just said, uh-huh, so I don't, maybe he thinks that. But I'd be curious on the rest of the board, it just seems a little.
No, I, I was just agreeing, I, I think it wouldn't be hard to have a couple council members sit on that.
You know, well, that's just it, I, um, last city I was on the council with, they had a personnel committee. So I don't know if that's something that you wanna, you should try or?
That wouldn't fall under personnel committee, but, um, but I think that that isn't a big ask. Just ask for a couple volunteers and probably no, well, if it's more than two, then you're gonna have to advertise. So I don't think that that's an issue.
No, I think one or two would be fine. I just, I think it's important that whoever it is, Baker Tilly or whomever, knows that they're working for the council to get this done and we're the ones that are proving them. Not that these guys are gonna give them the next compensation study or the next feasibility study on the police station and the next. I, I just think there's a little bit of a conflict of interest there that if I was a salesperson, I'd want the people making the decision happy. And whether it's said or just implied or whatever, just assumed by that individual doing it. You know, I mean, I wanna make my customer happy so it's easy to come up with some information that maybe is a little more beneficial to the people that are making that decision. And I want it to make sure that it's, they know who they're, they're working for the city of New Prague and specifically for the elected officials.
When you get to that point, Josh, I'm assuming you're gonna present us with the RFP or?
RFQ, yeah.
And, and just to, for us to be able to talk about or discuss if we want any, uh, unique features to it.
Correct.
And, you know, I, I toss around, how do we analyze the golf course? And how do we know what's the right thing to do there or into the future? And I don't know if we can get that as part of this or, or maybe it's nothing to do with it. But I, I wonder oftentimes about how do we judge ourselves? Are we doing a good job or not? And how kinda peer group can we really use on some of these things? And I know I tried to look at other golf, cities with golf courses and it's, it's hard. The legal Minnesota cities is not a really good resource for, in, in my experience anyway, finding good information about what other towns are like us in this way. They, they don't have like a database that I can plug in and say, you know, how many, you know, have this? And how many have individual utilities that operate like we do? So we have peers, so I don't know if this RFP can kinda, a feature of it might be able to help with some of those kinda questions. And what are we, what are we defining a compensation to mean? Are we doing this just to kinda double check on our statutory requirements for, um, whatever that is, affirmative back, whatever that?
Equity pay.
Equity pay, is that, that's not the only, are we gonna, is that one of the things we wanna get out of this, is our study?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's kinda what I envisioned our, before we formally put out, and come back to the council and say, this is kind of what we're thinking. Are, is there stuff that you know, you guys like on this, don't like, should add, should take away, that sort of thing, before we would actually go out and hopefully be able to answer most of those questions? What, what are we considering compensation? Is it just pay, is it benefits, is it, you wanna look at job descriptions, that sort of thing?
As, as an industry, and I've worked with different industries, like, I'm so used to having really good studies that really get down much more detail as far as how many, how many have this benefit and how many don't? How many people in the twin cities market has this, how many in rural? And I don't know how detailed, but we want, might wanna talk about, you know, the detail we want this RFP or Q or whatever to be? And what features do we wanna see and don't? And what, are they gonna help us with selecting the towns or are we selecting, are we even doing that? But, so I envision instead of, you know, when you, when you give us the draft that we have some time to actually throw out some questions to us, is what do you want?
Yep.
Details or what kinda things are you thinking about would be helpful? You know?
Good questions.
Anything else, Sean?
No, that was, those two.
Maggie?
I don't have anything other than what Sean brought up with the vehicles at Rusty Spoke.
You got the phone call too, or a couple.
They must have just sent them to you?
They just told me in the person.
Oh, yeah. Sean, urge. Sean, or Josh?
Uh, yes, I'm gonna go all the way back to page twelve on the packet uh, when Bruce asked about miscellaneous revenue being high as well as government buildings being high. I did get an email from Robin, so she must be tuning in. Hello? If you look at those numbers, miscellaneous revenue is over two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars-ish and government buildings is over two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars-ish. See, she said both of those have to do with what we just approved tonight, um, being the re-roofing of the buildings. The revenue's high because of insurance money, the expenses are high because of the cost to do that.
So went into miscellaneous and came out of government?
Yes.
Okay.
And other than that, I don't have any.
Okay.
That's it?
That's it, sir. Tim?
Nothing.
Bruce?
Good, thanks.
Tim?
Matt? Chief. Okay, I take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. Everybody have a really good holiday.
Merry Christmas to everybody.
Ten-nothing Vikings already.
It's early. Didn't make it.
I know, I didn't miss that.